The time is two oh three P M. We're gonna get started. I didn't give a hold of anyone to do an opening ceremony today. Anin Nindaway Maganada. Yiji Kikinura Maganag. Nishwetjendam Indawamennuukum. Iski Gamedigge Beesusnuukum. Ashijanggasso Penenidzis. Oza Wanaquatwa Nendiko. Nicole Nidjimikas. Ishiki Manissina Duren. Niskua Gamivili Zakaay Kanin Nidjiba. Obashin Nidjiba. Oka Kanin Nidjibum. Anin, everybody, welcome to today's school board meeting on this nineteenth day of April. Happy to see you all here today. Today, I would like to ask Tom Barrett, would you call to order?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chairwoman Nicole G. Darley.
Oh, my idea.
Vice Chairman Chris Buran. Clerk Ian Stilb Staley. Director Mike Barrett. Director Robert Timerson. Director Douglas Jack G. Darley. Director Thomas Barrett, here. Superintendent Andrew.
Oh, my idea.
Chairwoman.
With that being said, Nishwetj, Tom, we would like to move on to item. One B. Do you have any guests today?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have two sets of guests. Mrs. Brun and Micah. And then we have two students who are here to speak about our peer leadership program, if you miss. Amaya Sitfo and Reyna Bron.
Anin, welcome, ladies. Come on up. Uh, they're doing things.
And actually, probably before, let's say, even before we do that, I wonder if we shouldn't do the.
Approval of the agenda?
So that we're officially and technically.
I don't know. Yeah, we can lead the guest group.
I stand corrected. You are correct. So what these two ladies have agreed to do, there was a third person too, who was going to join them. That person changed his mind at the last minute, but we have two very good spokespeople here for our peer leadership program that we've been going, doing for the last couple of months. And they're here to talk about, explain a little bit about what we do and about what it's meant for them to be a part of that. So we don't have any particular order, so I don't know if, maybe, Amaya, you had something prepared and written, right? Did you want to start? And then we could, or maybe we should start with some of the pictures, but it's up to you. What do you think? Start with the pictures? Okay. All right, so hopefully this will work. Hoping that people will. Sharing, looks like it's sharing okay. So I'm gonna jump down. This is a PowerPoint that we presented to some people in the nation and in the county. Last week, I had two students talk about about this. And, no. Hold on here.
They don't have.
Yeah, and actually, I don't have.
You won't have the rights?
I don't know if this is actually what we're, yeah, it should have been, but um, I don't have the controls for this either, so. Was there something up here before? I don't think there was. So I think it's still sharing with the people out there. We should be okay. Problem is, they won't be able to, so. Back up just a second and see if I can get out of sharing.
You want me to go get mine?
Yeah, if you wish, please. In the meantime, maybe we can put a hold on your presentation and let Mrs. Brun and Micah share their thoughts. Would that be okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, that will be fine.
I don't think you have any slides, correct?
Thanks for allowing us to come in and talk with you guys. Um, I was excited to hear that the football team was gonna be going to Adam Thielen camp. But as a parent of a football player, um, I wanted to come and meet with you guys a few times. Um, and that's why we reached out to Chris today and he notified me that you guys had a meeting today. Um, you know, Micah, we've always been a football family since he was in second grade, starting off at Flag Football. And um, he went to the Michi School District for some time. And seeing how the other districts have the curriculum for football, um, we came here and he, you know, was being adjusted to um, the equipment and different things here. Um, as a mom, you know, we would go and watch them at every practice and the games and for me, it was concerning to see your boys up there cold. Um, we had the other visiting teams come in and they had warming jackets. And I don't know if you guys remember that we had a day where it was snowing and it was cold and the kids were shivering. And we, during halftime, we had some of the players who didn't have anywhere to go, so we told them, you know, get in my car, you know, we had them sitting in there warming up. We brought blankets to the game so the boys can have a blanket to warm up with, um, even away games, too, it gave them blankets. And for me, I was concerned because I wanted to see if we're able to fundraise as parents. Um, if we can announce that if anybody's wanting to help out with fundraisers, so we can get warming jackets for them. Um, you know, that for me, Micah, he's always on the field. He hardly takes a break. He's constantly out there, but we do have some younger boys who are helping out, middle school players who are doing, you know, the waters, who are doing change, too, and they're cold and for me, it's just, if we're able to get together as parents, um, and doing more things for football teams, you know, they have, Lenji has, I believe, like seven camps that they send their football team to. They're practicing during the summers, um, in the morning, they're doing weight training. All season, when football's over, they put those boys in the gym and they're training, they're weightlifting. And I would like to see if we're able to develop a program like this for our boys here. Um, you know, Micah, he's not a basketball player. Um, he's not a softball player, so far as the thing, I know we have kids here who don't play football, who don't play basketball. They do golf, maybe soccer. Um, there are things that I wish that we're able to um, have merchandise also for them. You know, we have basketball sweaters, we have t-shirts. I would like to see if we're able to work with the school and get, you know, football sweaters. I have to make my own football sweater. I'm fine with that, but I think other parents would like to make their own, or not make their own, but be able to purchase that. The funding from that can go toward the team. Um, you know, concessions, if we can get concessions going again, and that money can go toward the football team. Um, another thing was getting the upperclassmen to work with the elementary football team, almost like a mentorship. They can go over there, show the boys the skill that they've acquired, um, teaching them that importance, almost like bridging that with the secondary and the elementary. Um, kinda telling the kids, you know, almost like telling them, it's important to get your grades up. And so then it was teaching them the same place. And it's almost like you have to practice what you preach. If these boys, this high school boy, they're telling the younger kids, you have to do this homework, that's keeping them accountable. Um, teaching the younger ones, it's almost like giving back and showing them. A lot of boys, you know, don't have big brothers. And these boys are able to go and teach the younger ones, you know, the dance and things like that. Um, that was my idea as a parent was we need to be able to develop a football curriculum also, um, working with them and other parents who work through having the boys, um, the football players go and get involved in maybe doing taco sales and car wash or whatever like that, so we're able to start getting the things that we do need. Um, you know, so it's just my idea as a parent. I don't know if my husband has. He's stuck out. If he has something too, but we're always talking about what can we do. Um, we talked to Micah about it. If you want something, you have to work for it. And that's been his thing, everything is little. You wanna play football, you have to work hard on the football field. If we're gonna drive you from Red Lake to Lenji, you have to, you know, work hard out there. You can't just do it little. You have to put everything into it. Um, and so I know he wanted to come in today and also kind of speak behalf of a player and what it's like and what they was like from the school or what kind of support.
Um, so on behalf of, based like some of the players in my team, uh, most of us, we, we are excited for this next season and we feel like that will be our best season. But, um, you know, another thing is just like half our coaching staff, when we were there, like, say game day, like, you know, they wanna show up to practices, we'll have like one coach, two coaches out there, you know, when they're supposed to be like usually like three or four. So half our coaches don't even show up and, um, you know, it's just like, I, I would like for like, certain like, like a whole line coach, you know, like a, a D-line coach, a linebacker coach, so they can actually like each the position that they're doing. Because half our team, they don't even know what a linebacker is for the game. They're just running through the back, so not just gonna hit something, you know? They didn't know what containment was, so. A linebacker, so just like run through there, all they gotta do is run up to the edge and it's just like, it's a touchdown every play. That was the reason why we got blown out every game, you know? It was like, I, I would like another, like a, a weight room, you know, look, look, our middle school weight room is like trashed, like torn apart, is like cables are broken everywhere, you know? And it's like, I would like more on to equipment too, like, you know, like a push sled, this, is anything like to help with online or just maybe QB activity, like, you know, something to help the larger team to actually test, or a playbook, like an actual playbook. If you didn't have a playbook, well, the teams we're going against had like huge army, you know? And it is like, when there's, when there's a thirteen person team, but like our reserves are middle schoolers and there are still middle schoolers playing on our team, our varsity team, and we're gonna get the team to have a varsity team and a, a junior team, you know, like, it, it was just like, I don't know, it was, it was unfair and I'm glad that we're starting in the division. Um, and like, we're back to what my mom said, like, kind of coach the new people to actually motivate them to actually wanna play football. It's like, 'cause, 'cause Red Lake, I see that as like a basketball, like, you know, a basketball organization, you know, it's just like the sports here are mainly around basketball, 'cause Roman did that basketball, or baseball too, you know? Um, and people kind of thought of Red Lake as a joke, you know, and it was, it was, it was weird to me, actually losing an entire season, 'cause I'm used to sort of winning the win, you know? So it, it kind of opened up my eyes a lot to it and a lot of people, a lot of people on our football team, upcoming seniors are excited to actually play, like, and try to win, like, a lot of people are motivated to win. So I think, I think, uh, get more equipment, stuff like that, 'cause we're willing to put in the work. It's just, we don't have unlimited opportunities to actually do it.
Yeah, it's Nishwetj's time. I appreciate your input. Yeah, that's what we like to hear. We wanna know what you guys are looking at and looking for. Yeah.
And Madam Chair, if I may add, a little addendum. Um, we have this camp, the football team, we're going to the Adam Thielen Camp. The camp is designed for younger kids, upper elementary and middle school, but somebody in Lenji approached me and made me aware of this camp, so we applied. And when I talked to the executive chairperson, Nolan and I both here, they told me, yes, one of your students also applied for this camp. And that student's name, I said, well, really, what student is that? Student named Micah Bron, do you know who that is? And I said, I do. He's a leader. He's on the football team. And so I wanna make sure that I publicly, publicly announce and recognize Micah for his leadership, for being a student who actually stepped up and filled out and submitted an application so that the players could participate in this football camp. And because the Adam Thielen Foundation had read, many of them had read the article, the people on the board, that was in the Tribune about the football team and Nolan and how even though we didn't have a winning season, the students are all winners. They said, we're gonna make an exception and let your football team, varsity, come to the camp. And oh, by the way, we're also gonna give you ten thousand dollars. So I think that if we talk to the coaches and the students and Micah's input here, some of that money can be given towards jackets to stay warm, um, some of the equipment in the weight room. Um, some of the other equipment that you're asking for. So well deserved and well earned. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Micah, uh, just wanna let you know, um, Chris Walker, is he a teacher or was Chris Walker?
He was a counselor.
Um, he approached me and about the same concerns about the weight rooms near most schools. And uh, he's, you know, said the same thing Micah said, it's not very good and, um, you know, um, so right now, uh, me and Chris, in the very beginning stages, we're working on getting extra funding outside of the school, 'cause I know sometimes our resources financially are limited and why we can't make a nice state of the art weight room. So, uh, right now, we have Boys and Girls Club and the chemical health program have each committed ten thousand dollars. Not, not officially, this is like, you know, it's not on paper, but I can guarantee you guys here that that is gonna be a real thing.
All right.
And, um, you know, 'cause not only will it benefit our football team, it'll benefit our entire school. Like, what Chris was telling me is our kids, uh, wanna go there for mental health reasons. You know, uh, skip, um, maybe they wanna stay at the lunchroom, they wanna go to the weight room, do a quick workout and um, some kids just wanna be more physically, uh, healthier. So, um, it's, uh, it's nice to hear from the students that you guys want that too. That's, that's awesome, you know? When I was in high school, we, same thing, it was pretty mediocre, you know, but we tried to meet up and, um, uh, weight train weeks before the actual practice started in August. And, you know, hearing from the students, it's awesome. I feel like this, this type of mentality is gonna change our athletic culture. That's what it is. Yeah, in Red Lake, we, we have like a P E basketball league and we have, you know, the emphasis on, you know, like they said, merchandise for the basketball teams. But maybe as a school and as a community, we should, you know, start putting more thought and resources for other sports too. And it causes a ripple effect for our sports to be more successful and more fun for the kids. So just wanted to let you know, like, there's, uh, plans to improve our weight room.
Okay, for sure. I'd like to say that we did appreciate a lot of parents and the students going up to the wakeings. At first, it was our bus driver that drove the boys down to us and another family that were there. And we had surrounded by all the fans of this whole town, but the whole town was shut down. Everybody in that town was there and there was like the bus driver and us there, then thirteen more people and then other awakenings, there was like a few of our, you know, different families all showing up and there was a, you know, line of us and you can see that the last game, the boys were so happy and they were like.
It was definitely like, uh, like a morale boost, like, you know, like, people actually wanted to come, actually watch, you know, like, like it, like it, no one wants to, like, see no one on your side and just the opponents, other teams just failed to the max, so our sidelines like empty, like nothing there, you know, like, it was definitely a morale boost to see a little bit of people there.
Honking the horns when the boys are making touchdowns and it was, it was exciting and I'm excited to see where this program's gonna go. Not only for, you know, this year and the next year, but, you know, when my kindergartner is in high school here, where it's gonna be at. Um, but I'm glad and thank you guys for listening to us and hearing us out.
Thank you.
Nishwetj, appreciate your time. Have a good day, guys.
All right.
All right, I'll go hear the next group. Reyna and.
Nishwetj. Amea. I will go into sharing mode here and hopefully this time it'll work just fine. But I had asked a couple of the peer leaders to, uh, share what is going on and this first slide here is actually sort of the middle of the PowerPoint, the show graphic about what we're all about. What we're about is making connections. And if you look at that graphic there, the, the orange person in the middle is like one of the peer leaders. And that peer leader is reaching out and making connections with other kids and helping to create a web of connections in the school. And the program that we're working with also does work with big organizations, not only other schools, indigenous schools, but United States Air Force, which has one of the highest rates of suicide. And they asked this company to come in and work with them, 'cause people who are connected are less likely to hurt themselves or feel depressed. They also go in and work with the New York City Police Department to improve that sense of brotherhood and sisterhood within the, the ranks. So this is what it's about and what they do actually is create these networks and then analyze them. And each of these networks that I show you are getting bigger and bigger. You see on the bottom left, that word isolate, that's an isolated individual who's likely to be lonely. Maybe not. I like to be alone a lot 'cause I'm an introvert, but it could be that that person needs somebody to connect. And in schools, that's often a person who's neglected. So the peer leader program is about reaching out to people so they feel connected. And that's a pretty big map right there of a program that they're doing in the Air Force. And all those dots in red are people who are struggling. And after a while, they switch over to green, which means they are now feeling connected, which is really kind of cool. So I'm gonna go into PowerPoint mode here and we'll talk a little bit about some of these activities that are designed to make connections. And it's not just about games. It's about doing things together to build teams and to build a sense of connection and trust and friendship. And as we're looking at these pictures and they're explaining the game, I want you to pay attention to the smiles and their expressions of engagement with the students, okay? So this first game, these two pictures are games that we played when we went to South Dakota. Any of you, either of you wanna, Reyna, you wanna share a little bit about that? I think that first one was Find Your Partner. Remember that one?
Uh, yeah.
And they're proposing there, right?
Yeah.
Two different circles, right? Inner and outer. What's the goal?
Um, well, that one was to find your partner. Like, you were introduced to somebody you didn't know and you walked in a circle opposite directions. And when they called it a pose, that's when you had to find what you started with and you said pose. I think that one was proposal.
Yep, making a proposal. The will's proposing, yeah.
See, and it's all about communication, about who's gonna be, you know, proposal, who's gonna be kneeling, who's gonna be, you know? See, and it's all about communication, about who's gonna be, you know, proposal, who's gonna be kneeling, who's gonna be, you know, and, um.
And the other picture is the same thing, but that's the princess one, right?
Yeah, that's damsel or something, yeah.
Yeah. Now, that one might be hard to remember, but I think that was the reverse way.
Yes, it was, uh, so that one was.
And this one's another picture of it. Yeah.
I don't, I'm, hmm, so there was four groups.
Yeah.
Of people.
I think so.
And, um, basically. There was a person standing with the sign, with the action, and you had to move, I got the action to the person who's the, the judge. And basically, you just did the action, and it was all about teamwork and.
And communication, I suppose, right?
Yeah.
Imagine Raina has a sign that says milking a cow, she holds it up like this, and Amea can't see it, but you guys can, and you're a team. Now, you all have to, without saying anything, have to act out what it looks like to milk a cow. And Amea has to guess what she's doing. And if she's the first one to yell out milking a cow, we win that point, okay? It was a fun team game, it really was. Um, this is the same game, you can see the guy on the volleyball stand there, he's the judge. And he's watching and listening to see which team gets the answer first, and there's like twenty different activities that we had to guess. That was kinda fun, the guy in the back with his arms crossed, that's Tim McGowan, he's the one who's been working with us in both times. He's an amazing guy. And this one with the rope circle.
That was one where it got shorter or something, right? Yeah, we had to, uh. Basically, just a circle made out of jump rope, and it kinda got smaller and smaller, just in different ways we could fit into the circle. With a set of rules, and it's kinda more like problem solving, critical thinking. Um, it's like finding different ways to fit into the circle that was made, and, yeah, it was cool.
There were like forty people, and we had to fit ourselves into a circle first about the size of these desks. We did it, and then they made the circle about half the size, and we did it. And then about fourth the size, and it was like, how are we gonna get everybody in there?
Yeah.
We figured out, well, some of us can stand on one foot, some of us, the rule was both feet in the circle. So if you're standing on one foot, it still works for you, the other foot's still in the circle, but you're making more room. And we squeezed together, and then somebody figured out, well, somebody could lie on the floor and still have their feet in the circle. So we could think outside the circle. Right? Not a good game if we're in the middle of COVID, but we're past COVID now, and we can sort of. And I think this is, uh, one of our last games, but directly, well, you can see what that one is, right? That was a fun one.
Hmm, uh, actually, we did a couple of games of circle.
Yeah.
Um, first one was seeing how many different groups of, or how many different types of numbers of people to get. Under the rope and then use a certain amount of turns, um. So, well, I think the one it's showing is actually the one we did where it was a crossword type thing where. Uh, say one person went, and the thing kept going, we had to send a different pattern of numbers. Under, and if it stopped, we had the wrong number of people that would do it, and so it was kinda just like starting over and going again and again, um.
And one of the lights, kinda like the, the circle game, where we had to figure out more and more people. How many jumps are the takes to get through? And can you do it with three groups going through? How about two groups, and then?
And there was, yeah, there was the one here.
And I don't think that's everybody, I think that was like the first half, and then the second half, and waiting to go on the next jump. It was a really big jump rope, as you can see, but that was another really good team event, wasn't it? And I think this is back to Find Your Partner, we'll wrap up. So, we've played a bunch of other games, but they're kinda hard to explain, but we, uh, one of the things about this program, they had spent free. We received a bunch of equipment to play, and you can see Raina's wearing a hoodie, I'm wearing the same hoodie. This Tim McGowan guy, biased, we all have the same outfits, we can feel like we're a unification, unified group. And then he sent us, brought with him, a big duffel bag with all this different equipment we can use for games. One of them's the chicken game, kids really like that, throw it back and forth, and, uh. Have fun and find out the drop it, you know? We've gotten, we've gotten pretty good. And then there's another fun game, which isn't in this picture, which is called, remember what it was called? Trump game, right?
Fight game or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the idea is, it's like ten, they've been a bag, you get ten people on a team. So. And it's a race across a gymnasium floor. We had. Be like this, okay, they have this, they have a marble, and they have a more of a fabric like a tennis ball. Tennis ball was slower, this was in the middle size, the marble was much faster. So, maybe if, uh, sort of understand, then picture ten different people here and another team of ten over here, or even fifteen. We start the ball, we just a little bit of a tilt, and then we have to keep it going. Without dropping, until we make it all the way to the other side. And if we drop, we don't have to start over, we just have to stop, pick it up, start fresh halfway through, you know? But it was one of the most fun games, I think, that we had, so. We have about, we have two bags of these, and about ten or twelve of these bags, and we can order more, but talk about a fun. Team activity that, uh, fun game activities are elimination games, some are just on the bases. And they're a great way to build teams, and we had teams from our school. And three or four other schools who were there, and we got to meet each other, become friends, it was really cool, so. That kinda gives you a sample of, of what some of the things are that we do to make these connections. And how generous the program has been, I mean, we have paid for the travel and lodging and time of this guy who comes in. But he has provided a lot for our value. And, and now if you guys, you know, one or both of you wanna talk a little bit about what this program has meant for you guys.
If you haven't prepared. I'm a little bit nervous. We've had a journey to many.
Sorry, for too many. Just find someplace to look you on, that's why I started public speaking.
Just read nice and loudly and slowly, you're good.
Um, I didn't know what the, like, the question was, so I, you know, but this question has kept popping up in my head. So, I wrote that, and, oh, yeah. When this group first started, um, just a few weeks before. I was like really depressed, and like, I had, I have attempted to, you know, kill myself. But to the same, I'm glad I didn't go through with it, because it gave me a purpose. It motivated me to get out of bed, it connected me with people I needed to know, that I would be, you know. Like, friends with, and. Helping other people come out of their shell and bring us together, it got my social, my social spark back. After COVID, I had a major social anxiety thing going on, and. Wasn't as social as I was before COVID, um. This group gave me a second chance to get over the fear of talking to people, and. Another chance at life, you know, learning. Um, it's fun, I haven't smiled this much in a year. It brought me closer to people, as I said, and. If it wasn't for this group, I'd stay in the sh- the shell that made me so miserable. This group is exactly what the school needed, and it, in general, made me a better person.
Thank you for sharing that. That is so great of you to talk about that, there's some personal things, you know, I appreciate Sherry. Same, same to Raina, I remember you from volleyball elementary. Yes, I appreciate girls coming in and talking, sharing with the school board. Um, leadership training is, is very fun, I've attended a few myself, so I'm excited for us to participate. In some of these games with you guys in the gym. I think we should do that, find that in the future.
Bring it, anytime, yeah.
Our team versus your team, that's. But I just, anybody else have anything to add?
Great job speaking, by the way.
Yeah, very good.
Very good, I used to be words and handing it to us, and, um. Tim, I know you were involved in this, I think this is, um, this is awesome. Starts with a group of kids, and they reciprocate that to the rest of the school, and it's, um, really awesome, and. Thank you so much for sharing your story with us, you.
She put tears in my eyes, she read that to me yesterday. This is what it's about.
It is, truly is.
And watching both of these young ladies grow and mature and connect, and I mean, we're on a trip for four days in South Dakota. Which is amazing.
Now, we can share this with the rest of the school.
Yep, we're gonna keep growing it, and next year we'll have more kids, and. Growing. And Amea, would you be willing to give to Sherry over there? That note you wrote, and so she could scan it, cause I'd like to send it to, to the other team, would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you can have it back, if he would really find that meaningful to know your story, okay? So, thank you.
Good job, girls, good work, and, and one day, one day, we're gonna need a million people, like, cute, to be sitting there.
Yeah, you'll be sitting here someday.
Keep it up, I'm very proud of you, sharing that, and taking a part of it, 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 it takes a lot to get out of your comfort zone. You know what I mean, it's much more easier in your comfort zone, and, and when you come out, you learn so much about yourself, and. It's kinda what we, we really need, you know, we really, really need you, the young people to. To get out of the comfort zone, you know, cause in Red Lake, we're really just surrounded by people we already know. You know, for the most part, it's very comfortable, you know, everybody, uh, uh, it can be challenging to do what you did, but, so.
That's picking up Chris's comment, yes, we know each other, but we don't. We know of each other, but we, this right here is bringing us closer and connecting and communicating like we should. So I appreciate that.
Some of the students have said they were a little nervous about meeting students from other schools, and they weren't all native school, some were, some weren't. They, they would say, well, they're just like us. Yeah, it was brutal, so. Thank you, I suppose, if Dan is out there, Sherry, could you tell Dan that you could buzz them through those doors, passing their classes? Thank you.
Wow, you reached him.
All the kids, great.
That was, that was awesome, I, you know, I've attended a London graduation leadership training, and it's with Red Lake Beach Creek and Wyer. So we had a cohort of us, and we sat together all week and went through exercises, similarly what you guys did. And so I'm excited for us to join, you know, whenever this goes on, I would, I would love to come and hang in, and, you know, connect.
But I remember letting you know when we have another event.
Maybe we could do something like this at the staff, you know, on these days.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, and with that being said, let's move on to item three, summary overview of agenda, Superintendent Weeks.
Migwich, ogumai kree. After our allotted time, which was just finished with comments from the public, we'll have our reports portion of the meeting. I already emailed that to you, but you'll also get from the, from Willie, the business manager's report. After that, we'll move into the consent agenda, which has eighteen items today, including approving the minutes from the March fifteenth meeting. Then an unpaid leave of absence, a transfer request, six retirement requests, it's the time of the year for that. Six hiring requests, followed by additions to the subs list. And then finishing out the consent agenda with two out of state travel requests. The board will then move into the action items on the agenda, and there are only three. Including approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million, nine hundred forty-four thousand and ten dollars and ninety-two cents. Then approving the creation and the posting of the following positions beginning next year. The Jibway Language and Culture Specialist, a new position. English Language Arts Teacher, a math teacher, a secretary position. A developmental adaptive physical education teacher position, and nine tiered student support professionals. We'll be able to do these hires through some ESSER dollars, that if we don't use, we will lose. We want to ramp up our staffing, especially in the area of student supports. Then we'll move on to item C, which is approving the termination of employment of an employee. Then the board will move into, um. Second of three readings of nine different policies, we had the first reading last board meeting. This will be the second, and you'll have a third and final reading in May. We'll then move on to the miscellaneous portion of the agenda and adopt a second reading of four policies, so. I think I misspoke there, there, um. The nine, there is no item B, that's carried over from last month, so that won't be happening. But we will move on to the second of three readings of the miscellaneous policies at the end, so my bad on that one. And that should wrap up the board meeting, thank you.
Is there any discussion, or first of all, can I get a, um, motion to approve the agenda for the April eighteenth, two thousand one three?
I'll move to approve.
Chris? Superintendent Weeks, is this the correct time to ask if there's any comments or questions regarding the agenda?
Yep, I think so.
Yes, I believe this is, is there anybody that has any comments or questions regarding the agenda? Okay, we'll, we'll take a roll, if those, all, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, we have aye or a no, no. We'll move on to item five, public comments and delegations. Oh, we already did this, they were the guests.
Yeah, and that's okay, yeah.
Okay, so they could either be guests or public comments.
Exactly, and usually the public comments are often a more of a complaint type.
Okay.
And a guest, more, well, actually, guests could be silent too, we can just acknowledge that they're here.
Uh-huh, okay.
So.
All right, we'll, we'll move on to item six, reports.
And you, Madam Chair, and actually, the first one, item A one is already, really no new updates since the last board meeting. Um, I will have maybe next month an update, which is interesting, one thing I left out, as we were talking about this peer leadership program. Um, this Tim McGowan we work with, because he does some work across the nation. There have been a couple of filmmakers who have wanted to do a documentary that will be on Netflix. About this program and its effectiveness with bringing people together. So when we first started this program and we trained our teachers, and our paraprofessionals and bus drivers and. The stodion, and cooks, and everybody, about what we were doing, he came and trained us, and then these two. Individuals came, one of them, uh, film recorder, and the other one was a sound person. And they were so impressed with what they saw, the second level of our teachers, that one of the people, the person working on the sound. So, the leader, Tim McGowan, that he is wanting to make a huge donation, a big gift and donation. The Red Lake School District, so that we can use it for certain projects that students might be interested in, like some outdoor citizen science work. Uh, water quality, watching the birds, astronomy, things like that. And then before they left, he bought the three of them about four hundred dollars worth of Red Lake's school clothing and outfits. From the school store. But just last week, I received an envelope or package in the mail, and a note from this guy who was the sound person. And he said, I'm sorry it's taken me so long, but I had to wait for my taxes, kind of figure things out, but here's a donation form. I have opened it up, inside the letter was a check. At first I thought it was a check for, wow, three thousand dollars. And then I realized there's another zero. Check for thirty thousand dollars. So in a sense, whatever we've spent on this program is about one ten. Eight, um, is what we received from this program. So at the next board meeting, that'll be one of my updates, is that we'll be approving officially that gift and thanking him publicly for that. Um, item A2, I've already submitted, but I wanted to highlight again, part of my report was also done today. It was talking about the Healan Football Camp and then this leadership program. So now we can move into item three, if that's okay, which is the enrollment reports portion. That should be in your board book and, uh, continues to be encouraging news. Last month's enrollment report showed us as a district at one thousand five hundred and ninety-five students. This month, we've gained fifteen or fifteen hires. One thousand six hundred and ten. And that's good news for two reasons. Number one, we're growing. But for me, sometimes it's even more important to say we're not losing. I think even at the beginning of the year, we were starting to because of fights and other issues. But now we're starting to see a steadying off and not losing students anymore. At least not in the numbers we did this fall and we're continuing to grow. So my hope is, I'm pretty confident in this, that next year we'll start the year around sixteen hundred. And with programs in place and more student supports, we'll keep those students growing, so. That's encouraging news, not only financially, but also just because our hope is that this place continues to be a, a school that promotes positive climate and culture for the kids. That's good news to share.
Neegwich. So we're gonna move on to six B, Jurnia Gichi Oguma DeBajamoin, Business Manager reported.
Neegwich. Willie had seven items. He wanted to make sure we knew that he had his biweekly check-in meetings with all of the various coordinators that he supervises. Then the fiscal year twenty-four health insurance rates came in, and those are bids that we'll look at in just a second after this report. He met with representative from an insurance company called Insure Forward to start the renewal process for property and workers' comp insurance. Then the district received the second fiscal year twenty-three impact aid payment in March. The payment represented ninety percent of the lot for basic support. And I think that's the same item he had in the last, um, board meeting as well, but he wanted to make sure we knew that we have now received ninety percent of our impact aid for the year. He has item number five, built spreadsheets to begin costing out the negotiations baseline as we begin the process of negotiating with all of our bargaining unit groups. And, uh, a reminder that all employment contracts expire on June thirtieth. He has completed and submitted the fiscal year twenty-four Title VI, Federal Indian Education Budget and Application. The copy of the budget has been submitted to the Department of Education. And, uh, item seven, he has participated in the following trainings and meetings. Office of Traffic Safety for Bus Stop Armed Camber Grant that we received. The Insure Forward Meeting that we just talked about for workers' comp and property insurance. And then the Northwest Service Co-op Meeting where we discussed the fiscal year twenty-four health insurance renewal. And then tied to this report, we can just move right into six B, item two, which is the health insurance summary bit. It's rare to, uh, see anything go down. And of course, this year it didn't go down. I think last year didn't quite go up as much as it did this year, but that's in your board book as well. The, uh, according to the Health Insurance Transparency Act, the district has accepted sealed health insurance set of bids. There were several bids that were sealed and submitted. And the district received sealed bids from them, from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and the Minnesota Service Co-ops. The, uh, we had sent out requests for proposals to five groups. And we only got back from Blue Cross and the Minnesota Service Co-op. The bids were opened on March twentieth at three forty-five PM by the district business manager, by Willie, and by, and with the representative from Ed, Minnesota, Red Lake, Don Clickey was present. The bids were reviewed by those in attendance and after the opening of the bids and they were compared, they decided to select the Minnesota Service Co-op as their insurance carrier. Now, they do work with Blue Cross or with Medica, but by going with Minnesota Service Co-op, we're going with them as an administrative of the insurance plans. The bid for the service co-ops provides the same benefits of the plan that was negotiated way back in the ninety-one to ninety-three master agreement. So it kind of gives you a sense of how long we've been with them. And it provides a guaranteed rate cap where it can't go up more than fourteen and a half percent for the following year. This is a two-year agreement. Additionally, this is the same provider the district has used over twenty years and will not require, therefore, any of our employees on that plan to complete any kind of new application forms. So, uh, recommendation from Willie and from that bid opening is that we will be going with that plan in the next year. And unfortunately, a fourteen percent bump is, uh, fourteen and a half is not cheap, but it's better than what some groups had last year, forty-five to fifty to sixty percent. Some groups experiencing this as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And the finance report, item three.
That's a very long report, so generally Willie suggests that we don't, you know, spend time with that in the board meeting. We look at it ahead of time, but Willie said that, uh, everything is, um, balanced and appropriate and is there for your approval.
Okay, thank you for that. We're gonna move on to item C, Ojibwe Giten, Gitenestowin, Wudakar, Wudakar.
And that's a standing item on the agenda, but some months there is no report. That's the case for this, this month, there's no report. Actually, I believe Jack and Gidoo are at the state, M I E A. Actually, no, so.
Well, we're gonna move on to item seven, consent agenda for April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Neegwich. And as I mentioned earlier, there are a number of items, but they're all basically broken down into about four or five categories. And they're all very routine, so we can approve all of them at one time as we consent agenda. And they are mostly resignations, transfers, or hireings.
Neegwich, Tim. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three? Tina, motion still through? We have a second.
I'll second.
Chris, second time. With all that, with, if all that being said, is there any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda?
Um, is there like a limit on legal absence or how is that? How long do we hold the?
There are, yeah, Sherry, you can remember, I think there's a certain number that our policies allow. Three or four. So I believe it's more than one, though, that somebody has, goes in with absence. But that's some homework that I can find out for you and bring back, okay?
You mean that, uh, that spot is not being filled or is there an unpaid legal absence?
No, it would still be filled, yeah. It's, uh, when you have somebody move on, um, either a paid leave of absence or an unpaid, try if that position is necessary for other places.
So like say for now, there's a sub there?
Yep.
Okay.
Either, I should say, I should qualify that, either a sub or they can consolidate the program in some way, that they, not where the, uh, where that, if it's a necessary program, it goes uncovered. So it would be, would be covered in some way, form, and manner.
Okay, with that being said, can we take a roll call on those? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Okay, so we are five, four, and zero against. With that being said, we can move on to item eight, closed session. Does there need to be a closed session today?
Not at this time.
Okay, Neegwich for that. We'll move on to item nine, action items.
Neegwich, Chairwoman. The first item is, and again, everything is routine here, but through two million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand and ten dollars and ninety-two cents in, um, list of bills and wires. Check numbers, two hundred and thirteen, eight fifty-eight, two hundred and fourteen, one forty-seven, along with some wires that don't necessarily come with numbers for that two point nine million plus change. And I checked with Willie and said, asking if there was anything that he wanted to point out, and he said, no, everything again is routine through district business. I submit that for your approval.
Neegwich. With that, we'll take a motion to approve the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million, nine hundred forty-four, ten dollars and ninety-two cents. Okay, that's not funny. Like, do I have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Neegwich, Tom. We have a second. Executed by Tina. Any further discussion? Shall we? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
We're at five, four, no against, zero against. And we will move on to item nine B.
Neegwich Ogumai Kwe. This one is, is something that's routinely done about this time every year and for the next few months, and we work on filling new positions. Sometimes it's re-filling positions that are vacant. But in this case, many of these positions are brand new. Um, for instance, the Jibway Language and Culture, we're able to bring in one more position that we hope to place in the middle level that we can really work toward more students learning the language and developing more advanced language skills. Then, English, math teacher positions are currently, you know, positions that we would like to have. We're advertising, pushing for them again. Same with the, uh, developmental adapted Pi Ed teacher. That's a Pi Ed teacher who worked with physically handicapped students and we have them, but we need one more to ramp up that program. And then the tiered student supports, uh, professionals. We want to add some positions so that we can provide more support for our students. So I submit to you this list and ask for your approval. We can move forward.
And the student support, that's nine positions? All right, Neegwich, Tim. May I have a motion to approve the creation and posting of the above positions beginning in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Neegwich, Mike. We have a second.
I'll second.
Neegwich, Tom. Any further discussion?
I do, um, I assume you say that we have some funds that we gotta come use up to create this, this pot. How about as far as maintaining this pot?
And that would be your question. Thank you. That's a stupid question. Good one to ask. Some of these, we, we do believe, for instance, the Language and Culture Specialist, that one will be ever paid for consistently in a sustained manner through the budget that Gidoo has, because we're moving some of the other budget items back, including the S R O position and a few others. So that thing we can sustain. The English and Math Teachers, those are already in the budget, so those aren't part of ESSER. Um, same with the Secretary, I believe, and the Pi Ed teachers. So most of this is from the ESSER position. And my hope would be that we can continue to find ways to sustain some of them, maybe even most of them, but we probably can't for all of them, because the goal behind this would be if we have enough positions in place where students can truly be supported next year, that we can begin to, continue to reverse some of these difficult effects that we're seeing because of COVID. And that's what exactly the ESSER dollars are for. To reverse the bad effects that occur academically, socially, emotionally, and mental health wise by supporting students. Whenever we've added new programs, I've always tried to keep them going as long as possible. So if we do hire people and it looks like our budgets are getting tight and we have to maybe reduce a couple, I would like to try to find in those instances, other places for the people that might have to be reduced. And usually we can do that by, through, uh, attrition. One or two or three people will retire or resign who are already working for us as tiered, some kind of support person, in that these people who we can no longer afford can be moved into. So we can still keep the people who are doing the good work, but we might not be able to sustain all nine beyond next year. But if we don't spend the money, we'll lose it. So we'd rather get people in place and get them supporting bids. So thank you once again.
Where's the Secretary's pot at?
That would be over, um, in the middle school level area, um, with kind of a shortage. And actually, we could, with that new position, be able to do some more of anything.
So is the tiered student support professional, professionals, so they're just like a one-year gig as of now?
As of now, but we, I'm fairly confident, very confident in fact, that we'll be able to keep some of those on. Can't guarantee all of them. It is ESSER dollars and they will dry up, but we will probably also find that we don't need that many if we can get a handle on supporting students next year.
Thanks, guys. Do you have any more questions? Okay, with that being said, is there a motion? Uh, can I take a roll call on all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Um, we are on nine.
Nine B.
Nine B.
The last position.
Yeah, the revision. You're okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we have five, four, and no, and zero against. We are moving on to item ten, miscellaneous.
Neegwich, there's a charlie. These are the, uh, policies that we had a first reading of in the March board meeting. The, uh, second reading of the chemical use and abuse, four seventeen policy, and the drug-free workplace school policy number four eighteen. And, uh, because we had a first reading, we won't have to go through all of these changes again, just bring them up again. And the purpose for having two or sometimes three readings is so that we can get this out there in the public and give people the chance to hear about them or ask questions in between board meetings. But I didn't get any questions from anybody between last board meeting and this one. And these are all recommended policies. Four required policies from the MSBA, and they're the ones making some of these changes. So so I submit to you the second reading on that one and then the ten B are, uh, the second readings of policy five sixteen point five overdose medication, Narcan. And then policy seven twenty-two, public data. And then policy seven twenty-two, public data requests policy as well. And again, since this is only the second reading, just like the first reading, you don't have to take a vote. But we will, I believe, next month when we do the final. So if you have any questions, you know, now would get them to ask, or if you want, you can look them over over the next few weeks, and then if you have any concerns. But the policy changes in all of these are designed to clean up the language, to make them more efficient, and to make them more um appropriate and current to the situation that will be addressed.
Rich for that.
In regards to the um, uh, Narcan, or is there like a plan in place for staff training, um, using the?
Not only is there a plan, but we've had the training a little, yeah, we, and we'll continue to have that training. Well, thank you for asking that. We had a training, um, gosh, it wasn't the very beginning of the year, but maybe uh, October or November, in front of their staff, on where they're located, how to use the Narcan, and I was relieved to find out that that you can't overdose on Narcan. You administer it, and if it doesn't seem to work the first time, you can administer another dose while you're waiting, let's say, for an ambulance. So that was something I didn't know, and I learned. But we will continue to provide training on that, just like we have training on use of our AED devices as well. And by the way, those have been re-upped so the batteries are fresh and loaded as well.
Okay.
We tend to forget about them, you know, we don't use them, but let's say we have a basketball game or another game, and half the community was here, you never know what might happen, both with the AEDs and with perhaps a need for Narcan. And so in some cases, we store the Narcan very close to the AEDs as well.
Should we sell our games when this is?
I'll say.
You know, my concern on the, on the, on the chemical use and abuse of it's reading, you know, we made some changes to it, but it's still so easy for certain things to go undetected. And I don't know, you know what I mean? I've discussed this before at the table that the I don't know how to fix it either.
Right.
You know what I mean? But it's too easy to circumvent the system if you're missing certain things.
Right, and it's uh, probably like, you know, a policy in is the where an institutional version of a law or a statute. But just like a statute, a state law, or a federal law, the laws in and of themselves can't dictate that people will obey, you know? They enforce in so much that they educate and share expectations, and then they give us the enforcement ability once we have become aware of the infraction, if you will. But unfortunately, you're right, there's too many ways to get around pretty much any policy, really, but especially this one.
Nick Rich. Was there anything further for our members?
But anyway, we're, we're going to be doing any update on free recruitment.
It's, it's going well, actually. I checked with Mike. It's ongoing. Uh, we haven't gotten to the point where we felt like we needed to offer bonuses, because we, whenever we do a recruiting drive, we do get, you know, let's say, three, four applicants. The problem is you start with three or four applicants, one might drop out because it's such a rigorous process, and then maybe one might have to drop out because of a problem with the driving record. So when you start with four or five, you end up with two, but it's still going well, and doing okay. We can't ever stop um, the recruitment process, just like now with teachers and other support staff.
Teachers, state, Mike.
Used to be, you'd get applications, you know, a hundred of them for a very great teacher. Now we get two or three, if any.
They're talking about raising um the pay for the teachers so we can draw interest.
Yep.
All right. Okay, Nick Rich for that. Chris, is there anything further, guys? May I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, Nick Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we got five, four, and zero against. Adfirmment at three ten.
And with that, I will close out the team's reading. Thank you to you who have joined us.